Good afternoon, everyone. It's 1:30. We're reconvening into our open session. As always, we open our open session with a pledge of allegiance. We have two young ladies here who are going to lead us in.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you, ladies. We have two very capable fifth graders getting ready to go to middle school next year. I know you must be excited about that, who have come from Fruitland Intermediate to lead us in the pledge this afternoon. We have Carson Shockley and we have Rowan Porter. So, thank you for being here. You did a great job, ladies. Would you like to introduce your moms to us?
I'm here today. I have Kara Shockley, my mom.
And I have Amy Porter.
And then our wonderful principal, Mr. John.
Next, next on our agenda is 3.2. Approve the approval of the agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
They move.
Second.
I got a motion second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yes, sing. Thank you. 3.3, again this month. We've lost a couple of our family. Adele Beal, retired elementary teacher. Pemberton, North Salisbury, Pinehurst. And Jean Bradford, retired food service worker at J&amp;B in high school. At this time, in your own way, I'd like to have a moment of silence. Thank you.
Mr. Fitzgerald, could I add something about Ms. Beal? Not only did she teach at Pemberton, she opened Pemberton. I was a seventh grade student and she happened to be a second grade teacher when Pemberton was opened.
Okay. Thank you. 3.4, student representatives of the board. And I believe at the table, we have Tiana Stanton from Mardella.
Hi, everyone.
What's going on in Mardella?
So, at Mardella this year, we closed up everything. Well, not close up everything, but like, we're closing the year. We celebrated our seniors' accomplishment. We had the seniors on their caps and gowns and walk the halls to their class song. And this was a way to inspire the younger students to continue pursuing their education and showing them the end result. And at senior night, awards were given out and scholarships were recognized. And then at the senior social, superlatives were given out as everyone reflected on their high school years. And we gave the seniors a tearful goodbye at their graduation ceremony and we wished them the best in their future endeavors. The Mardella alumni and seniors held a panel for the underclassmen to ask questions about college, entering the military, and entering the workforce. The information given was really helpful to students who wanted to plan for their junior and senior years. The SGA held its elections along with class officers. I won president, so you'll see me again next year. And Kirsten Lovelace won vice president. Allison O'Sara won secretary. Emma Robbins won treasurer. And Zoe DePasqua won historian. To close our sports seasons, we helped the banquet to recognize all of our spring athletes. We recognized scholar athletes, sportsmanship, unsung heroes, and MVPs. The track team celebrated a successful season, having six members qualify for states, all in individual events. Our baseball team also celebrated one of their most successful seasons in years. And Mardella was recognized for its sportsmanship and proudly continues to be recognized for its spirit and kindness towards other teams. Lastly, our school is ecstatic about the work being done to the track. The bleachers that have been installed are a huge, huge upgrade from what we had previously. Everyone's excited for the installation of the pole vault, high jump, long jump, triple jump, discus, and shot put equipment that we're receiving. And of course, the track getting rubberized over the summer. We're really excited to host our first homecoming game at home and to host track meets next year. Overall, Mardella had a great year and it wouldn't have been possible without each of you. And for that, we say thank you. And I'd like to personally thank all of you guys for listening to me every month. And I can't wait to see you guys next year.
But we want to thank you. And then, you know, I know it's my highlight at the board meetings to hear what's going on in each one of the schools. So, from me, I wanted to thank you for the job you have done this year. From Parkside High School, Gavin Dennis. Aye, Gavin?
So, um, I just wanted to say thank you to all of you, to the Board of Education, County Council, and really, all those who helped us through renovation here at Parkside. We are finally bringing all the teachers back into the main building, which is a very supportive thing for our Ram fam. I also want to show our congratulations to the 263 seniors that have been a part of the 2019 alumni. We are super proud of that at Parkside. And we just want to say thank you to everyone that has helped us during this time. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And you're going to be the representative next year. So, we'll be looking forward to seeing you all next year.
Looking forward to it, too.
From YI, Reese Chang. What's going on in YI? Other than three half-days?
Well, things are beginning to slow down a little bit since we're getting close to the end of the year. But we still had an incentive this month for the junior class because they had the highest attendance for the marking period at 97.16%.
Congratulations.
Thank you. All members of the junior class received reusable aluminum water bottles with the new logo on it, which is pretty cool. Our PBYAS also held an incentive for students who had both a 3.5 GPA and no referrals for the fourth marking period. This marks our biggest of the year as students were served pizza and snow cones, as well as bouncy house-style inflatables and a game trailer for entertainment. So, that was fun. Our Tribe After School program is, continues to demonstrate its worth as we average about 30 to 60 kids a night for the whole school year. This was partially due to our newly-added activities from 4:00 to 5:00 p.m., such as chess club, horticulture club, and many more. Graduation went extremely well as we celebrated our seniors with the assistance of our wonderful choir and symphonic band. And we are proud to say that our seniors earned just over $4.3 million in scholarship money, which is the most in school history. The SGA had a great year as we're about at a surplus of about $3,000, which we plan on dominating back to the school through things such as the new beautification committee led by Ms. McCoy, purchasing a new table for our outside eating area, and designing banners to improve and encourage school spirit. As a student government, it is our job to promote spirit within the school and show off how great YI really is. We're giving this money back to the school student body to help act on these values. Although we are incredibly proud of everything we've accomplished in the 2018-2019 school year, we must not turn our focus to what is, we must now turn our focus to what is in store for us in 2020. However, it is hard to be anything but excited as we've just elected new class officers for the 2019-2020 school year. And as executive president, I have the utmost confidence in everyone elected and look forward to another great year for the SGA and YI. Thanks.
Thank you, Lyle, again. You'll be the representative next year.
Yes, sir.
So, we'll be looking forward to working with you.
I'm looking forward to it, too. Thank you.
And James H. Bennett? Lauren, you're hiding up there. I didn't think anybody was here. How are you? What's going on with J&amp;B?
Well, hello. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
My name is Lauren Illa and I am actually the executive board treasurer this year for J&amp;B. Our president for next year. Young Julie Lee was unfortunately unable to attend today as she's out of town. So, I just wanted to come and give you an update on things the executive board has been communicating with students and the concerns they have. We've had a lot of accomplishments just in this past month alone. A great graduating class, a lot of plans we have for the future. But we thought it most pertinent to address two recurring issues that we've been having within the school. The overpopulation of our school and the current board policy about skipping classes, including the punishment for that. So, currently, J&amp;B has exceeded our building capacity for students. And we think part of this is caused by the large amount of ELL students in our program that have been directed to J&amp;B. We understand that the ELL program is less developed in the other schools and so a lot of students are being directed to J&amp;B. This has caused some conflict between students and has weakened some control the administration has over our school. So, we think that decreasing the population to a degree would be effective because, for example, since our seniors have graduated, we've lost nearly a quarter of our school. We've experienced less congestion and also less admonosity between the students and the administration. And we are aware that the board is currently considering a plan to restructure the ELL program. But it's our understanding that those changes would only occur about two years from now. And we would like you to consider making these changes at a sooner notice. Another issue brought to our attention was the county policy for punishing students who skip class, which has been a more prevalent issue recently. As of now, the most extreme punishment is in-school suspension that can be offered by administration, which is viewed by students as a lighter punishment and it doesn't deter them from actually following the rules and attending their classes regularly. We suggest that after multiple attempts of skipping class, students receive a more severe punishment, such as out-of-school suspension. So, that was something that our administration would like to bring to light. But, on a lighter note, our SGA for next year is planning more activities and events. We have a theme planned for our homecoming, a family involvement event for the community, which we also did this past spring, that we'd like to introduce in the fall. And more spirited pep rallies to really unify our school for next year. Our students at J&amp;B are very excited for our summer break and are eager to finish out this school year strong. And we look forward to meeting with our incoming administrators and are ready to welcome our new freshmen. Thank you.
Well, thank you for letting us know your concerns from the students.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
We don't know if you don't tell us.
3.5, public comments. And I do not have any. Moving along. 3.6, superintendent's report. Dr. Hanlon, I'll turn it over to you.
Oh, good afternoon. We have a few items under superintendent's report, as usual. I want to start with a report from Dr. Briggs, our chief academic officer. An update on our ongoing work that we're doing related to ESSA, the Every Student Succeeds Act. Federal requirements. Very brief update from Dr. Briggs.
Very brief?
Thank you, Dr. Briggs.
Thank you.
All right. So, good afternoon, board members. Oh, Dr. Hanlon. And those watching at home, I guess. So, as Dr. Hanlon alluded to, the Every Student Succeeds Act does have a number of requirements that go along with it. And two of which are, it requires states to identify schools in two specific areas, right? The first one is comprehensive support and improvement schools, or CSI schools. They are the lowest-performing schools in a state. And you'll see that that's not up on the screen because Wycomico is fortunate to not have any CSI schools or comprehensive support and improvement schools. There are approximately 50 in the state of Maryland across, I believe, four districts. So, no CSI schools for Wycomico. Targeted support and improvement schools, or TSI schools, is where certain student groups in a school may be underperforming. And Wycomico do have, does have a couple of those, so I want to talk a little bit about that today. So, before we get to those specifics, just to recap, you may remember in early December, I shared with you the star ratings for all of our schools. Quick review that, you know, all of our elementary schools that had the opportunity to earn enough points to actually get a rating, earned four stars. And then, for our secondary schools, either three or four star ratings. And again, that's based upon the percentage of points earned. So, that second column there is the percentage of the day earned. And that's going to come into play in just a second. So, I wanted to point that out first. A reminder that Maryland Report Card is a great site for both parents, community members, and specifically, school leaders. Our school improvement teams, which I'll talk about in just a second, really use this informative data to drive the improvement process at the school. For TSI identification, Maryland decided to use all four indicators. So, both academic and school quality and student success measures are included in that ID process. So, it's not just about math and ELA achievement, although that's important. It's also access to a well-rounded curriculum, reducing the number of students who are chronically absent, and also academic progress or students demonstrating academic growth, even though they may not be reached proficiency yet. So, how does the state identify, how does Maryland identify a TSI school? So, it's any subgroup earning 34.4% or less of possible points that was identified as a TSI school. So, if you go, I'm going to go back here for a second. This mock school earned 71% of their points for all students. However, for TSI schools, it breaks it down into the various subgroups, right? So, students with disabilities, English language learners, by race. And so, it's if those subgroups, any of those subgroups, achieve less than 34.4% of the points, that school got the designation of a TSI school. Across the state, there were 376 TSI schools, both Title I and non-Title I. And the top four student groups that the reason for those schools being identified as a TSI school were students with disabilities, economically disadvantaged students, or farm students, English language learners, and then African-American students. I am proud to say, although we do have a couple of TSI schools, none of our schools were identified for TSI status based upon the African-American student population, all right? So, none of those were specific racial inequities. So, that, proud to say that. We did have six schools. One elementary school, two of our in-town middle schools, and then our three in-town high schools were all identified based upon the reasons for those, for the subgroups was because of special education, again, economically disadvantaged, and then our EL student population. Those were our identifier subgroups. So, what do we do? Local responsibilities. And again, I want to emphasize that it stays here at the local level. All TSI schools, it's local accountability. The state's not getting involved. The contrary to that would be the CSI schools, which we don't have any of. That involves much greater state involvement. And as with many things, we want the state to stay away. So, oversight is all on us. Each school will be developing a TSI intervention plan that involves key stakeholders, looks at inequities amongst students groups, identifies the needs, things that we can do as a school and as a school district to better meet the student population's needs. And then, how do we, how are we going to continue to monitor this, let it's not just a one-shot deal? And so, we're looking for sustainability over time. And because our schools have a lot going on and we don't want to have one more thing on their plates, we're just including this as part of their overall school improvement plans. That's what our schools and our school teams are doing anyway, is figuring out how can we, how can we meet the needs of all of our student subgroups? Just these six schools will have specific targeted plans for their key identifying subgroups. And then last, because we were identified as a TSI school, we want to know how we're going to get out of it. And schools must demonstrate significant progress for two consecutive years. So, hopefully, I'll be able to come back and report next year and then the year after that those schools are indeed heading in the right direction. And then also, we'll come up with a sustainability plan so that it's just not two years and then we don't backslide. We want to keep, keep that moving forward. That was it? Questions? Comments?
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. We will keep you posted. And if you're at all interested, you may want to go on the Maryland Report Card. And it's pretty self-explanatory to get to specific school data. But you can be assured that Dr. Briggs and the directors of secondary and elementary are working with instructional supervisors and building principals and assistant principals to make sure that the proper resources are in place to assist the schools and that interventions are laid out in their school improvement plans and are being followed through. So, we will keep you posted. So, let's see. Which of my good news things am I going to do next? Let's go right to grants, Dr. Briggs. Since you had the microphone, we will just do this a little out of order. Dr. Briggs is going to give you an update on our grants report. Then, we're going to specifically talk to you about what we're doing in terms of school safety with grants.
Okay. For this month's grant presentation, we have two familiar faces who will be sharing some information about how we utilize grants to help protect our staff and students. As they make their way down to the table, I want to share that the grant report for the month of May is available in board docs. This past month is normally a slow month for grant funding and that pattern continued, so we did not have any grants funded this past month. However, staff continued to seek additional funding streams for our students and we submitted grants totaling over $500,000. So, we look forward to hopefully sharing some positive responses to these requests next month. So, at this time, I'm going to pass the baton down to Mrs. Miles, who will be introducing our guest.
And good afternoon, everyone. You see before you now two amazing people among a group of many amazing people. Kelly Moore Springston, our director of school climate and safety, and David Owens, our Safe Schools Coordinator. What they're going to do is share with you in just a few moments, information about our receipt of safety grants from the Maryland State Department of Education. And there are several different areas within these grants. Included are the program called the School Safety Grant Program. That's by the IAC, the Interagency Commission on School Construction. Mrs. Ashby works with that very intensely in terms of our focus with our vestibules and other physical safety elements. We have the Safe Schools Fund Grant, which they're going to focus on. And newly reappointed or rededicated will be funding for the School Traffic Safety Enforcement Grant. And that has been in the past provided to local law enforcement. And it will be once again provided to them for enforcement in relation to school bus stops, traffic around school buses, things of that nature. So, with more info on the second grant I mentioned, the Safe Schools Fund Grant, I'm going to turn it over to Kelly and to Dave. And I want to thank them publicly for all of their work in helping us to acquire these funds and to ensure that we are administering them for the safety of all of our staff and students in our schools.
Thank you, Ms. Miles. Good afternoon, Chairman Fitzgerald, Dr. Hanlon, and the board. I'm going to go right down the list. You can ask questions at the end if you need to. And then, I'll pass it over to Dave so he can elaborate a little bit more on a few more items that are on the list. Starting off, we have professional development and training on Safe Schools Behavior Threat Guidelines. We're also looking at manuals in which each school will receive a select amount of manuals in reference to threat assessment. Behavior and threat assessment and school safety awareness materials. This would be in the category of our Raptor Identification System in which we know it's going to be enhanced and upgraded at some point over the course of the year. And also, visitor information. The schools have an opportunity to select what their needs are and have the opportunity to purchase additional items. We have stipends for our social workers to support the Behavior Threat Assessment Program, as well as our guidance counselors and our school psychologists. Mr. Fitzgerald, I think you will be pleased with this. We have built in the opportunities for schools to purchase parking passes for the parents, as well as back pass, back pass passes, some type of pass in which the students could receive to tie in with the parking pass. And there's also what we call worm loops that will go with this item. So, our elementary schools will have that opportunity to be able to utilize these items in order to have a smooth transition with dismissal at the end of the day. We've also built in conferences. We have three. First one is the Mid-Atlantic Safety and Security Conference. The second one is the National Alternative Education Association Conference. And also, this is a huge one, the National Threat Assessment Conference for educational institutions. This conference would be in the fall, in which we will have at least 20 staff members, administrators, as well as additional staff have the opportunity to attend.
I'm ready. She's being a little bit humble. Our Behavior Threat Assessment Program, which is something we're very, very fond of and very proud of, we're kind of on the forefront in the state of Maryland Institute in our Behavioral Threat Assessment. We've done quite a bit of training. She's being humble again about that. But very excited. It's already being exercised around our schools so that we can assess threats as they come at us. So, my piece, good afternoon, board, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Hanlon, is about school safety evaluations. We use a platform that was formed by the Department of Homeland Security. All the schools have been, their evaluations are done at this point in time. We want to do this building, facilities, transportation. Those will be completed probably tomorrow. And they're due to the Maryland Center for School Safety on Saturday. So, they'll get packaged up on Friday, probably, to send to them. No need to be too urgent about it. We work with our partners, the fire department, the police departments, to kind of help make sure that we understand that we are doing some of the things the right way, the concerns they may have in regards to the safety around our schools. And then, this platform, and it's seven different categories that we work through. It's very standard and it helps us understand what we may lack in, but more importantly, what we're strong in as well. You got more, Simon?
That's good. That's you. You're finished.
We're done.
So, that's an overview of how we're spending the school safety funding, so.
David, if we find something that we're not strong on, is there a way to push that to the top of the heap so we can get it done quicker and then later?
So, we actually haven't sat as a group and even spoke yet. So, one of the things, and I was talking to Mr. Souza about it just a little bit ago, we have what are called high-speed avenues. Those are areas where you can directly drive into a building. And those areas are basically not mitigated anywhere on our property. So, if you look at the front door here at Long, you can see where a vehicle could drive right through that door. It's one of the things that Mr. Souza and I were just talking about. So, that might be an area of concern.
So, there is a way to, if we find something that we can get on?
Absolutely. So, the, when the, when the, when the survey is complete, it generates a summary report. And that'll be available very shortly to everyone. They're actually done at this point in time, just not disseminated. And it also generates a spreadsheet that will allow us to identify tasks and move forward with this.
And the next step is actually a repeat of a step we've had previously. We have a team, an internal team, that includes Mrs. Ashby, Mr. Souza, other persons from our central office. And we will sit down with the summary reports and begin to prioritize so that we can then associate funding and funding opportunities with the priorities as they are presented through this audit. So, it's very focused, very organized, and definitely with the benefit of safety of all as the priority.
Thank you.
Are there any areas that were considered for capital expense?
That's actually what will come out of that team coming together to determine if there are areas that would be identified as such. And we'll look to Mrs. Ashby and Mr. Souza for their leadership in that team. That's actually the group that met before that led us to focus on the secure vestibules in our schools. And we will again follow that same type of protocol to identify the next steps and where the funding would come. So, yes, that is a possibility, Mr. Palmer.
And secure vestibules, you only have, I believe, what, two more left to do?
We're down to two or three. I would look to Ms. Ashby for a head nod or a finger to tell me how many. But they have done amazing work to get that, three, okay.
For anybody who didn't see it, that was three. And let me tell you, that's a, that's a great achievement to get done. And as fast as what they've got it done. So, that's, that's a great job.
It truly is a team effort to bring in the facility side, the financial side, the safe school side. Again, focusing on safety.
What are the three?
I'm sorry.
What are the three that have not been finished?
One of them will be Beaver Run, I'm sure, because it's going to be.
The remaining three are Beaver Run, but we're holding off right now because of the replacement school, Welk, and then Northwestern. So, we've applied for the facilities grant funds for Northwestern and Welk. Those would be summer of 2020 projects.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I'm really, really pleased this afternoon to recognize three extraordinary individuals in. in our school system, three of our professional development coaches. We have with us today Katherine West, Jenny Bernardi, and Tracy McGovern. We'll have you come down in a second. I'll just talk a little bit about you first. We're recognizing them this afternoon for their extraordinary efforts that many of you are familiar with. They developed and implemented our first-ever county-wide book initiative called The Crossover Project, and I know many of you are familiar with that project, and we thought that it deserved special recognition. So, this one-county-one-book initiative resulted in all middle school staff and students reading the book, The Crossover, by Kwame Alexander. Katherine West, Tracy McGovern, and Jenny Bernardi worked tirelessly to plan all county events related to the book and raised over $5,000 in grants, in order to purchase each student and school staff member a personal copy of the book to keep. In addition to reading the same book, students participated in a variety of classroom activities and lessons related to the novel. And in partnership with the United Way, students were encouraged to support a fundraising effort to donate to the United Way of the Eastern Shore. And then, following the reading of the book, students, staff, and parents were invited to attend a culminating celebratory event at James M. Bennett High School. Activities at the event included school versus school basketball games, student versus staff basketball games, school versus school relays, poetry readings, and a chopped cooking contest. Students were provided prizes that included books, basketballs, and many other prizes. Area community organizations, such as the YMCA and PRMC, and Salisbury Parks and Recreation set up information tables to provide valuable information to the public. This highly successful event brought community leaders, students, and staff together for a common experience and demonstrated true leadership, and for that, we are very appreciative, ladies. So, I'd like to present you this afternoon with Golden Apple Awards. We really appreciate the work. I remember when they came and met with us, was that last fall? It was early in the year with this idea that certainly came to fruition, maybe even beyond our dreams. So, thank you so much for what you've done for our county.
Thank you.
And we also have with us Paige McSorley, who is the supervisor of Secondary English Language Arts, and I know how closely you worked with them and provided your leadership. So, thank you so much for your work. Mr. Butler, we'll let you go ahead with the Extra Mile Awards while we're on a roll.
Hope everybody's having a great day. Mr. Chairman, Dr. Hanlon, board members. This month, we have two Extra Mile Award winners. We'll start off with Christine Gove. Is she here? There she is. There she is. Christine is the Food Service Manager at Wycomico High School. She was nominated by Carrie Moore, Special Education Teacher at YI, and Carrie says every time she's dealt with Christine, she has bent over backwards to help in any way she can. She exemplifies going the extra mile. In fact, on one occasion, while getting ice for their cooler, a student of mine said, "Wow, they work really hard back there," as he watched them prepare for lunch. I've worked in several schools, and she says, not in Wycomico County, where the food service employees forget their mission of feeding kids, but not the YI food service team. They go above and beyond with Christine at the helm to make every student make sure they get fit. Now, during the after-school program, she showed the same kind of extra-mile spirit going out of her way to help. For her leadership, hard work, and can-do attitude, she is fantastic at what she does and always has a smile on her face. And for that, Christine Gove, Food Service Manager, we want you to come on down. You're one of our Extra Mile Award winners for the month of May. Congratulations, Christine. Okay, our next one goes to Tracy Saylor, who's here with part of her family today, our Public Information Officer. Now, since I took over this role as Director of Communications two years ago, I've seen so many Wycomico County Public Schools' employees go above and beyond in some terrific ways. Now, the last 30 days, though, in our Communications Department, Ms. Tracy Saylor has certainly gone the extra mile for our school system. She has almost single-handedly put together the Board of Education Awards and recognition events for the months of May and June. She gathers all the winners, creates a spreadsheet for the awards, writes a script for the ceremony, and then has me edit that, and she hates that, I'm sure, because I cut it down, and then putting together the time-consuming PowerPoint slideshow for each of these events. And it takes a couple of days to get this done. In addition, she traveled to both Hanover and Aberdeen to take hundreds of pictures of the James M. Bennett baseball team on their road to the state championship. Now, for the seniors at our high school, she constructed and posted well over 150 senior showcases on Facebook. She put in several 14-hour days over the past few weeks to make sure our awards programs and graduations went well, and she did it all with a smile. Now, this is in addition to her normal duties of maintaining much of our social media for Wycomico County Public Schools, answering parents' questions about this or that, or taking pictures at weekly school events. Now, I might add that Tracy also took and processed and posted hundreds, almost 1,000 pictures, this past weekend on social media for all five of our high school graduations. And for those reasons, Tracy Saylor, you are our Extra Mile winner for the month of May. Come on down, Tracy. Congratulations, Tracy and Christine, our Extra Mile Award winners for the month of May.
For my last item, this is a very special recognition. So, Grace Murdoch, would you come up and join us, please, with Mr. Fitzgerald, and our board members are certainly in support of this proclamation that we want to read this afternoon for Wycomico Grows Kindness and all of your efforts in our community. Whereas the Wycomico County Board of Education acknowledges the value and importance of each and every person embodying kindness and of the leadership of the organization Wycomico Grows Kindness, founded by Salisbury's Secretary of Kindness, Grace Foxwell Murdoch, in promoting small and large acts of kindness; and whereas the community has embraced the concept of kindness with Wycomico Grows Kindness, encouraging everyone to perform one act of kindness each day, and bringing kindness speakers to the community, with three years of participating in the Global Dance for Kindness with World Kindness Day, proclaimed by Mayor Jake Day on November 13, 2017, and further proclaimed by the Wycomico County Council on April 16, 2019, with schools in the community coming together to mark Random Acts of Kindness Week, with WCPS student Savannah Brooks winning the first national kindness speech contest, and putting the proceeds to work to boost local kindness initiatives, and with the city of Salisbury poised to become the first world kindness USA city. And whereas the Wycomico County Board of Education and Wycomico County Public Schools are proud to partner on kindness with Mrs. Murdoch, the 2018 Friend of Education Award winner, and an educator for Wycomico County Public Schools and Somerset County Public Schools for nearly 40 years, as she continues to promote kindness by making donations from proceeds of the sale of her handcrafted kindness bracelets and kindness clips, through the placement of buddy benches of kindness at our elementary schools, along with a selection of books about kindness, through encouragement for schools that create kindness clubs or have kindness as a school-wide theme, through the creation of kindness boxes that are auctioned or that were auctioned to help teams cover expenses for traveling to the Destination Imagination Global Finals. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Wycomico County Board of Education, on behalf of all employees and students of Wycomico County Public Schools, proudly proclaims support for Wycomico Grows Kindness and all of its endeavors to encourage a kinder and more peaceful community in its homes, its schools, its workplaces, and its public places. And be it further resolved that a copy of this proclamation be presented to Mrs. Grace Foxwell Murdoch, and a copy be spread upon the minutes of the Board of Education of Wycomico County this 11th day of June 2019. Of course, I can say something.
Grace is never speechless.
Thank you all so very much. I hope you know what this means to me. I first fell in love with Salisbury as a little girl, when we came from Princess Anne to shop for necessities, and then I moved here from Somerset County School System to Wycomico and fell in love with the school Pinehurst that I was in, and then it was just, the rest is history, because I had a wonderful career. And then, to leave and feel guilty that I still had something to give, I was blessed with a journey with this kindness bracelet, and Wycomico Grows Kindness was born. And I can tell you that Dr. Hanlon has supported me from day one, when I came and said, "I want to bring a speaker. I'd like to bring a bus." Yeah, that's another story. But thank you all so very much. And you know what this really means to me, is that all the schools, after this proclamation, we can be very proud of the schools who have already had kindness on their agenda for the last three years, and now there will be even more, and I'm very encouraged. And the students who are here today, when I hear what you're saying for spirit for your schools, please add kindness. I heard that word in Mardele's talk, so thank you, and I'm just very grateful. And what's good for all of us is that it's happening, and kindness is alive and well, and First USA Kindness City, the schools have been supportive of that from day one. So, thank you all very much. I'm very touched.
We appreciate you, Grace. I did bring some proclamation favors, but I'm going to leave with Mrs. Vessel. There might not be quite enough.
Thank you so much, Don. Thank you. All right.
So, we continue to have lots of great things happening in our school system, and it's always wonderful to be able to celebrate our partners and our own employees who are doing such great things. So, thank you very much.
Is that it? Thank you. 4.1 on our agenda, approve of the open session minutes, May 14th special meeting minutes, May 14th regular meeting minutes, and May 28th work session minutes. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the minutes, second?
I'll get a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is our consent items. And for the public, we have eight of them. We've had the opportunity to go over all these. Board members had the opportunity to question anything, so at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the consent items?
I'll motion, and I have a second discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, against saying, thank you. 6.1, during the May meeting of the Curriculum Council, we began the Inspired Biology published by McCraw Hill for considerations in new textbook for high school biology. The council unanimously recommended this textbook forward to the Board of Education for adoption, but under recommendation of Superintendent, the motion approved, Inspired Biology for first reading.
I move.
I have a motion.
Second.
Second discussion, and good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chairman Fitzgerald, Dr. Hanlon, members of the board. It is my pleasure to bring this textbook to you. For those of you who were here last year, you remember that about this time, we were here with what we felt was a transitional solution for our biology resource for our classes in high school. We were looking very diligently for a textbook that would indeed align to the next-gen science standards and prepare our students well for the content that will be on MESA, and will prepare them well with knowledge and content in biology. We have found such a book in Inspired Biology, and I will turn it over at this moment to Dr. Rager, who will explain why we selected this particular text.
Yes, good afternoon. Our prior textbook, current textbook, we adopted in 2008, and we began looking for replacements. Usually about six, seven, eight years we start looking, but the Maryland adopted the next-generation science standards as the state science standards in 2013. So, we wanted to wait until there was something that was really aligned well to the standards. Very shortly after 2013, the same old books started putting stickers on them and saying they were aligned. They really weren't. We weren't buying that. We waited and looked at a few last year that were starting to get there, and decided to go with that sort of stopgap measure with the consumable book this year, and we appreciate the board's support on that. But we do now have a book that we feel confident will meet the needs of our teachers and students moving forward, and that is the Inspired Biology textbook that we presented at Curriculum Council last month. It does have a number of innovations that are unique and new to this textbook that we haven't seen in the others. One is the full alignment to the NGSS, and that is built throughout the textbook, particularly in the teacher's edition, with lots of references, lots of indications where the teachers can make the connections to the three dimensions of the next-generation science standards, the content, the science and engineering practices, and the crosscutting concepts. And it really makes that clear to teachers and helps them make that clear to students. It involves what we refer to in science as storylines, which is kind of giving students a big picture and much more relevance. Instead of just learning a series of facts, the old standards really took that approach in the old biology HSA. We kind of joked and called it a glossary test, and unfortunately, that's really what it was. With the storyline approach, we're trying to give our students some context and see how the science facts that they're learning really play a relevant role in their daily life, and really make connections across the content. The textbook includes a piece called formative assessment probes, which are really helpful for teachers to sort of diagnose what students know prior to beginning instruction in a content area and throughout a unit, so that they can appropriately intervene and ensure that by the end of a unit and prior to the MESA exam, students have had the opportunity to have multiple opportunities to engage with the content practices and crosscutting concepts and build the kind of deep conceptual understanding that they're going to require. They make use of something called CER, or Claim Evidence Reasoning. They make use of something called CER or Claim Evidence Reasoning, which is a way of getting students to think and write about what they're learning, and again, that's the model that's used for the writing questions on MESA. The entire book is phenomenon-based, which again provides students with that real-world context, putting that content in situations, putting students in situations where they're applying the content as a way to make sense of something. So really by the end of a chapter or a unit, rather than simply spouting back facts, students are constructing explanations about a scientific, a real-world scientific phenomenon. Includes a rich vocabulary development, and one of the things that I enjoyed when looking at the student reviews is a couple of the students mentioned that the vocabulary in the textbook was a little bit more difficult, which I think was a good thing. The way they approached the vocabulary development in the textbook puts it in the context instead of simply giving a word and a definition, they're learning it at the point of use. It also really relies on building student knowledge and use of word roots, and also comparing how the use of scientific terms might be used in science as compared to in academic vocabulary or common usage, because there are a number of vocabulary words that may have mixed use in science as opposed to common usage. And along with the vocabulary, there's also a very rich support for English language learners. This was the first biology textbook that we saw that really devoted significant effort to supporting our EL students, so we were very impressed with that. And finally, one of the last innovations that they have is something called a Learn Smart Assessment, which is an online assessment tool teachers can give to students. Students not only do two things, not only do they select answers, but they also for each question indicate their degree of confidence with an answer. So when the teachers pull reports, they can see not only what did students get right or wrong, what did they get right that they really felt they knew, what did they get right that they thought, well, maybe they're just kind of guessing, and for the questions that they get wrong, what did they know they didn't know, or what did they think they knew and got wrong? So it really helps the teachers then craft their follow-up interventions to that assessment. Stand for any questions.
I'd like to just add something, and thank you, Mrs. Malone. She is so cooperative with me. I took the teacher's manual home and spent about three hours at least going through it. And what I was looking for was how the authors of the textbook were addressing reading strategies, if you know my background, that's where I come from, of how the authors of the book were addressing the various reading strategies to help the students comprehend what they were given. And I was so pleased, especially with the prior knowledge questions, cause and effect. You mentioned writing. They do creative writing, informal writing, technical writing, and narrative writing. All four of those are addressed in that textbook. They use quite a few graphic organizers, and I mentioned this to Mrs. Malone, whatever old is new again. They even went back and used the old proven SQ3R, which I think was first introduced to me in elementary school. And I was really impressed with the strategies, and I understand, Mrs. Malone, they are going to have in-service with this, and I asked a question, and your answer to me was, I was interested in the cost of the textbook. And now this includes in-service, this includes all of the extra work, not just the textbook, but I think the figure I was given was $112 per student. And I thought that was, having worked with textbooks and everything that comes with it, I think they made a good choice, and I was so impressed.
I would also point out that some years ago, textbooks were growing in size and in weight, and it seems that though this is a large textbook, it is a mammoth textbook. So I think we are beginning to learn that more is not necessarily better.
It's about 200 pages less than the previous book.
Okay. And this was evaluated by parents, by students, and by teachers. It came out of a recommendation of a committee of teachers, and as always, we will have it on display for those of the public that may also want to see it.
And it's also is for first reading, so they got a month to look at everything. Any other discussion?
Good work.
Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say aye. Thank you.
Thank you, and as I always say, thank you very much for your support of our instructional programs. We very much appreciate it.
Six point two, but under recommendation of Superintendent, it's our motion to approve the FY 2020 Educational Facilities Master Plan, EFMP, as reviewed and discussed in the May twenty-eighth, 2019 work session for submission to the state.
So moved.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second discussion. I'm at, are you?
Good afternoon, everybody.
Welcome.
Thank you for having me. As you mentioned, we reviewed the master plan in detail at the May twenty-eighth work session. Since that date, there were no major revisions. I will make note that since we posted it to board docs, the city, or not the city, the county council, they gave their letter of support, so that we do have that in hand now, so I'm not sure if that made it to your packets. During the work session, we highlighted several facility needs in relation to projected enrollments, special initiatives, and major capital needs. The top two major capital improvement projects identified were B or run replacement, the Mardella major renovation and addition. We also set forth the top priorities as far as systemic needs, those are also listed in the master plan. If approved today, we will be submitting the master plan to the IAC before the July first deadline. Any questions?
Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say aye.
Thank you all.
Hold on, Sir Rich, still.
I gotta go.
No, you don't either. Sir Rich, still. This is Matt's last time in front of the board, and from my perspective, I had the opportunity to work with him on the School Building Commission and here at the board. He's what you call a true professional. Matt's leaving us. I want to wish you the best.
Thank you.
You always have a home here, so if it doesn't work out, I know Dr. Hanlon will welcome you back, but again, for everything you've done in a short period of time you've been here, I know you didn't do it for yourself, you did it for the students of Wycomico County, and I applaud you for that.
Still have a full supporter, and you're not going to lose his face. I'll be around, don't worry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Six point three, but under Superintendent's recommendations, our motion to approve the amended proposed consolidated current expense budget for Y 2019, 2020 as hereby presented.
So moved.
I have a motion.
Second.
And I have a second discussion. Jesse, how many trees we kill with this last?
I know, I apologize. Good afternoon, Chairman Fitzgerald, Dr. Hanlon, board members. I have Debbie Smith with me today.
She's here to keep you straight.
She's here to keep me straight and help me navigate the budget. So on behalf of our superintendent and our staff, today we are presenting for your approval the final FY 20 consolidated current expense budget, and I'd like to briefly highlight a couple of items of note on page 22. On page 22, we have our general fund sources of revenue. We are receiving 46.15 million from the county. That's 1.987 million increase over last year, and it does include $800,000 above maintenance of effort we were approved for this funding, which is great. We're receiving 152 million in state formula aid. That's a $6 million increase over last year, and we just recently found out that we are receiving a grant of 1.8 million to fund a 1.5% increase in teacher salaries and a $2 million pre-K grant. So that brings our total state revenue, at the bottom, scroll down a little bit, to 206 million, or excuse me, our total state revenue to 156 million, which is 9.8 million over the previous year. This coupled with our additional county revenue brings our grand total to 206.6 million, which is 11.8 million more than last year, largely in part due to the Senate Bill 1030, which gave us those two additional grants of almost $4 million. And jumping ahead to page 29. This is a summary of how the additional 11.8 million is being budgeted. 235,000 is going towards Dr. Hanlon's strategic priority to increase the number of students ready to enter kindergarten. 1.3 million is going towards social, emotional, behavioral support, and English language learner support. 6 million to recruit and retain a high-performing workforce. 2.59 million for the cost of doing business, the cost just to open the doors next year. And again, the two grants that we received as a result of Senate Bill 1030, 1.8 million for the teacher salary grant, and 2 million for the pre-kindergarten grant. We were able to come up with budget reductions in the amount of 2.19 million, and the sum of all these figures equals the 11.8 million, which ties to the increase in general fund revenues that you just saw on the previous page. So we have a balanced budget. And I know you guys are probably tired of seeing the details, and I just wanted to go over a couple of them real briefly for the public, for the sake of the public. Just scroll down to priority two. Again, I'm not going to mention all these, just hit some of the highlights. We have, we're using some of the funds to hire an additional math and tech ed teacher for the next-gen program. We're hiring, or we're hoping to hire four ESOL teachers or English language learners teachers, two additional psychologists, two guidance counselors, two social workers, and an online lab teacher for our rapidly growing student enrollment. On the next page, again, 6 million to recruit and retain a high-performing workforce that was being used to fund our large health insurance increase, as well as the amount needed to fund our negotiated agreements. The teacher salary grant, again, per the bill, has to be used to fund a 1.5% increase in teacher salaries, which is what we've done. And finally, the pre-kindergarten grant, which of course needs to be put towards pre-kindergarten. We're hoping to add two early childhood lead teachers, three pre-kindergarten teachers. We're hoping to provide professional development for 65 childcare providers serving pre-kindergarten students in the community, and we're hoping to provide classroom libraries with resources to include items for multicultural, bilingual, and diverse families. Obviously, that's not all of them, just some of the highlights. We've gone over these several times, public hearings, board work sessions, board meetings. Upon approval of the budget today, hopefully, we will once again commence the process of developing our budget document in accordance with the ASBO Meritorious Budget Award Criteria, which we have won for the last eight years, and we're hoping to win again this year, and I stand ready to answer any questions you may have about the budget.
Got just one on the four English learning teachers. What languages are they going to encompass?
Most English language learners teachers don't actually speak a specific language. They just assist the students in the language acquisition process. Some may be fluent in Spanish or Haitian Creole, some of our more popular languages, but that's actually not a prerequisite to be an EL teacher.
Do we have any teachers with the Haitian Creole?
We have a couple, we have a couple teachers who have learned to speak it. Many are like French, French language speakers who have, over their time with the students and spending a lot of time and energy to get to know them, have learned some of the Haitian Creole.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say aye. Thank you, Jesse and Debbie.
Jesse, excellent job of wrapping up the budget process. And I just want to reiterate a thanks to, obviously, we're very grateful to be receiving the funding as a result of Kerwin recommendations, but we're also very appreciative of the ongoing support of the county and honoring our request above maintenance of effort that supports Imagine 2022, so just wanted to emphasize that once again.
And thank you. Six point four, the trustees of Wycomico County's Public En agencies, CPE Healthcare Consortium, unanimously voted to amend the memorandum of understanding, MOU, at the semi-annual meeting on May 10th, 2019, to reduce the call for healthcare rate stabilization fund, RSF, to 5% of annual premiums and reserve to 10% of annual premiums effective as the start of the next planning year, September 1st, 2019. But under Superintendent's recommendations, their motion that the board accept the above changes to the MOU for Wycomico County's Public En agencies, healthcare consortium.
So moved. Second.
I got a, excuse me, motion in a second discussion, Jesse.
Good afternoon. I just wanted to add that this recommendation was made by our healthcare provider and the healthcare consultant that we contract with, and the trustees did unanimously agree to it, but I'm available for any specific questions you might have about the change.
Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, say aye. Six point five, Jesse, you're just gonna skip back.
Stay up here for the next couple.
On May 6th, 2019, the other post-employees benefit O-PED gas费45 trustees and retirement plan trustees. Matt are presenting the following trustee changes for ratification. Steven, or Steve Hill, financial advisor, community member, to be reappointed for a three-year term. Wayne Warrington, rent shop, or the education employee representative, to be reappointed for a three-year term. But under Superintendent's recommendations and their motion that the board accept the above changes to the trustees of O-PED gas费45 retirement plan trust.
So moved.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Six point two, I'm, excuse me, six point six. The Food and Nutrition Service Department submitting the attached proposed budget for school year 2019, 20, and narrative for fiscal year 2019. The budget presents reflects a balanced budget with $8,452,038 of revenues and expenditures, and an appropriation of $434,364 from the food service fund balance, and a transfer of $150,000 from the general fund. This general fund transfer has decreased of $300,000 for the fiscal year 2019.
Good afternoon, Dr. Hanlon, Mr. Fitzgerald. You have the narrative in front of you. I would just like to reiterate a couple of things on the narrative. The first is, next year, the state will be, the state mandated a reduction in the reduced price for meals. So what that means is students that are qualified for reduced-price meals will pay 10 cents less next year and 10 cents less each year until the reduced price is zero. I think that's great for us in Wycomico County, that the students eventually that are reduced will not have to pay anything for their meals, but that funding will be coming from the state versus the Board of Ed having to fund any of that. The second thing I wanted to reiterate was that this year, as you'll see in the narrative, we are not requesting a board, the board to vote for a meal price increase, mainly because we have had a positive balance in our fund balance account, and there was legislation that was given that will allow us, we don't have to ask, we don't have to raise our price according to the price equity tool, raise our prices for meals. So that's another plus for our parents. And the third thing is that, starting next year, as you know, many of our schools participate in the CEP, Community Eligibility Provision, which allowed all the children in the school to have breakfast and lunch. which allowed all the children in the school to have breakfast and lunch free of charge. As, that's a four-year process for each school. This is the first year that we have gone through that process for four years for two of our schools. And looking at our numbers for this coming year, Glen Avenue's direct certification percentage made it not feasible for us to submit them again as a CEP school. I believe that's mainly due to some changes in the area where the number of students that automatically qualify for free reduced meals based on a status of homeless. They receive a SNAP benefit or they are a runaway. That number has been decreasing. We hope to continue to keep Glen Avenue operating, even though it won't be operating as a direct certification free, but we will still work on the free and reduced percentage for that school. And I stand for any questions.
I'd like for Mr. Gosley to inform us a little bit about the summer food trucks and what you will be doing. I found it quite interesting.
Sure. This summer, as in many summers the years pass, we have always operated a summer food service program. We've operated within our schools. Whenever there's a program going on in the school, we provide breakfast and lunch for the students of that program. We also go out into the community, different places in the community where we will go to apartment complexes, parks, playgrounds, community gardens and serve meals there as well. And we plan to continue that this year. As of now, we have about 16 sites that we will be serving meals in this summer.
How do you keep track of everybody that comes up to the window? I mean, if I see a food truck pull up, you know, and they've got good sandwiches, I might be tempted to go over there and say, hey, give me a sandwich.
Well.
You got a wristband or what do you do?
We really, it's not necessarily a food truck. We put food in our food service trucks. When, I want to clarify that the food truck is not like the commercial food trucks that are out in the community. We load our trucks with carts of food and we go to different places. And in our open sites, by nature of the program, anybody that's 18 or under, we feed them for free.
Mr. Gosley, don't you normally get a kind of a ballpark number from Rixon Parks and the projects itself as to how many people?
Yes. When they, we ask them to submit to us an application for meal service and then they give us a proposed number of students that we'll be feeding. And usually, we were pretty on target with it. We've had a couple occasions in past years where we've had more students come that we have food and basically, we just have it set up where if they call back to our main kitchen, we will get food to them. So we don't turn away any child.
Any other? Well, on my computer here, it doesn't say anything, but I got a little A here, so we have to boot on this, so I need a motion.
So moved.
Motion in the second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Eric, I just want to tell you thank you again for your efforts to reduce the amount of funding that you need from the general operating budget. I know it's your goal to become a self-sustaining enterprise, which is quite a goal, but you're moving in that direction, so congratulations.
And it's mainly due to, well, it's only due to the support of the team that we have behind us. Our finance team and all the food service workers that, the 160 some food service workers that make sure our kids get fed every day.
Thank you. 6.7. Jesse, we're going to have George U. for seat time. Upon the superintendent's recommendation, is our motion approved, the budget transfers as presented by the Controller for the month of June 2019?
So moved.
And a motion and a second discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against saying, thank you. You can stay around. 6.8. Upon the recommendation of superintendent, is our motion to tentatively ratify the memorandum of understanding amending the Unit 1 agreement pending ratification from the association.
Second.
I got a motion and a second discussion, Mr. Parvick.
Good afternoon, Mr. Fitzgerald, Dr. Hanlon and board members. I bring before you today a memorandum of understanding amending our previously ratified Unit 1 teachers agreement that includes the now, as Mr. Reed had talked about earlier, the Senate Bill 1030, Blueprint for Maryland's Future Kerwin Funding. And we've redistributed or distributed that $1.82 million through the teacher scale as per the memorandum of understanding where, for those that don't recall, and I guess for the public's information, the Blueprint for Maryland's Future indicated that school systems who found a way to give a 3% average across the board raise to their teachers, we would be eligible for this additional funding. We were able to successfully negotiate an agreement that did incorporate an average across the board raise of 3%. Therefore, we're eligible for this additional money. That additional money has to be spent in a particular way. And I know, Mr. Fitzgerald, you had asked earlier, so I'll make a point to mention it that we need to move our starting salaries and show priority to the first teachers with less than five years of experience. And this memorandum of understanding, we have tentatively, hopefully, agreed to with the association, found a way to distribute funds on the front end of our scale. And because we received such a high amount of Kerwin monies due to our relative wealth, which is what was used to provide the formulas, we were able to spread some money throughout the entire scale. And I'm confident with your ratification today, we will have an agreement with WCEA. And I'll stand for any questions that you might have. I think I covered everything I needed to cover.
Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against saying, thank you Vince.
Thank you.
Thank you Vince, for successful negotiations process.
Now, we'll start next year in a couple of weeks.
6.9 is information only, personnel matters. Everyone's had the opportunity to look at that. 610. Upon the superintendent's recommendation, is our motion to move forward with the settlement on the property adjacent to Mardella Middle and High School per design contract dated April 11th, 2019, and subject to state review and final review by the Board Attorney.
So moved.
And a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Ashby, how are you?
I'm good, Mr. Fitzgerald, how are you? Dr. Hanlon, Mr. Fitzgerald and board members. This is two property pieces you reviewed a few months ago. We are on the agenda with the IAC for this Thursday, so it's timely to bring it forward to the board for our final approval. If you have any questions, please let me know.
I don't have any questions, but Liesel, this is the the solution to the overcrowding over there in the school for sporting events and everything, where people are parked all over the place, correct?
Well, it's additional space. It's an existing residence whose driveway is off of our parking lot area, which is somewhat of a safety concern. These owners approached us. We weren't exactly looking. However, it gives us greater flexibility in the future to either potentially get an access off of the other roadway or provide additional parking, or it could be future space for a modular building to facilitate a renovation. So as we move forward with that next project, we'll be able to more clearly define. But it's an asset to the board to get these two pieces of property.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against saying, thank you.
Thank you.
7.1, board members' reports. Mr. Palmer, I'm going to start with you.
Thank you, Don. I make it a point each year to go to the nighttime student graduation. This year, we had 17 students. And if you ever go to these, let me tell you, these students go through a lot to get their diploma. And it's really, it's great to see them doing that. I believe next year they're going to move. Isn't that right, Dr. Hanlon? Okay, yeah, so. Yeah, so they're going to have a space all to their own then. And that's great, having a home, so I'm looking forward to that. But, and I hope our nighttime program grows. If anybody has an opportunity, need to go there, please feel free to see the school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray.
Okay. Quite a few activities are acting up toward our end of the year school things. And I was very fortunate to be able to attend some. On May 17th, the Wycomico Works over at the PRMC, I really enjoyed that, watching our students out and working in the different capacities and things of that nature, and they were honored. It was a special event. On May 23rd, I was down at Wonderful Willards, I guess they call it, for their parade, which was always a fantastic celebration. I also enjoyed watching all of our graduations. I was able to attend, some of them participated with Mardella NY High, special giving out the diplomas and watching our graduates come across congratulating them and, you know, wondering and thinking, okay, what's their next step? You know, and I'm sure as they stepped off that stage, they were thinking about that too. West Side Intermediate, I was able to attend their end of the year concert. Would love to attend more of them. Also, I thought it was a special tribute on May 30th at North Salisbury where they honored our vets. That was a very special program that evening, and all the participants and the veterans were there. And I'll probably let some up here talk about them later. And also, our awards nights, our last one was June 6th. That's always a special event, watching our students being recognized for their achievements. And also the one at the end with our retirees too, as they intervene throughout that evening program and their years of service. And I certainly thank them as well as everyone does, watching that. And of course, on June 7th, the ribbon cutting over at Choices with the Garden. That was a special tribute as well. That ends my report.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
So, like many others, several things I did this month. One, I participated in a panel discussion at West Salisbury with Dr. Hanlon and Mrs. Ashby. Greater Salisbury Committee has a program where people visit different schools and businesses. It was an interesting panel discussion. Interesting the questions you get from those folks. Attended the Chamber Awards with Dr. Hanlon, was also there, which is always a nice event, mingling with all the folks. Graduations with Mr. Palmer, Evening School, was just a couple of years in a row I've done that. It's like he said, it's a great, great event because you don't, you realize what these folks have gone through to actually end up graduating high school. It's amazing. Mr. Murray and I did Y High, which is our alma mater. Sadly, I'm older than him, but we were in school together. The 3rd of June, I read at Willards, like many of you read at Wonderful Willards Elementary School. So I walked in a first grade class and met Mrs. Shoal, who I thought to myself, you look very familiar. She said, well, I graduated high school at Parkside with your oldest son. So that just reinforces how old you really are when you get to these events. But it was very rewarding to spend time in that class. She was a very, very engaged teacher, and I thought, this is great. Someone that went to high school with one of my children and went to one of our high schools, Parkside High School, local. So great to see a local person doing well in our school system and giving back. And then I was at the Choices Garden, which is, Community Garden is a great, great project. And with signs and mottos and slogans these students came up with were amazing. That was a great event. So we're at the end of the year, so I'm reminded of a quote that I think applies to all teachers, administrators and students. So often you find that the students you're trying to inspire are the ones that end up inspiring you. And so I think for all of us, it was an inspirational year, 2018, 19 school year. There were so many great things that occurred. The problems we had, we worked out, we got through them. We got the budget passed. Imagine 2022 is pushing fast forward, which is great. So thanks to all of our staff, all our students and administrators, teachers for another wonderful year. Thanks for letting us be a part of it, and I look forward to being a part of the 19, 20 school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Okay, again, it's been a good year. There have been some challenges, but as Mr. Valona just said, we've been able to meet those challenges and work through them. I've attended many of the same functions that other board members have already mentioned, but four of them kind of stand out in my mind. First of all, I think about the graduations that we have attended. You realize that our kids altogether have won about $15 million in scholarships. That's quite a bit of money. I know Mardella had about $1.2 million, $4.2 million. Y High had like almost $5 million themselves. But you think about, some of these kids are going to some of the most prestigious colleges and universities in the country. So that's a big plus factor for our county. And those who are not going to college, many of them are now prepared to go into the workforce because of our CTE program. And we have a number, I'm really pleased about the number that are going into the military. So that's another plus factor with that program that we have here in Wycomico County. And if you think about the awards program, gosh, some of those people that are retiring, they look young to be retired. But some of them have been there for a good while because they were there while I was working. But it's good to see the people of that caliber who are retiring, and many of them will stay involved in the school system in some way. If you recall, we have an awards program here where we mentioned some of the substitute teachers, and many of those were teachers who have retired but still are substituting, so that was a big plus factor. And finally, the things that I'm impressed most about, and as Don says many times, is these kids, when they come up to report on their schools, of all the things that they're doing in their schools, and it seems to be, even though they're all in one county, they're all doing different things because of their particular school. And this kind of shows you that when you put talent together, you can come up with good results, but different kind of results.
Thank you.
As the new kid on the block, this, of course, was my first end of the school year as a member of the school board. I did help with the diplomas at Bennett and Parkside. And when they announced at Bennett that they had $8 million worth of scholarships, I looked over at the vice principal who was sitting next to me, and he said, you heard right, 8 million. But I do want to say something about the Y High scholarship program. I was a member of the class of 55, that was the first class to graduate from what is now Wycomico Senior High School. When we had our 50th anniversary, we raised over $50,000, actually, it was about $75,000, to start a scholarship program. This year, the class of 1955 did two $2,000 scholarships. And in the last 14 years, we have given $51,500 in scholarships to a graduating senior at Wycomico Senior High School. I think I can almost ditto everything that Mr. Murray said because I attended everything that he said. Actually, I attended 16 events since the last one. But I did two or three where I was the only one. I was invited by a biology class at James &amp; Bennett to go with them over to the Ward Museum to collect water samples. And we had a delightful morning, thoroughly enjoyed that. I also attended the pre-K 3 arts parade at Wonderful Willards. And I had a chance to chat with the lady from Baltimore who had been their artist in residence. And I learned a great deal about the program, and I hope we keep this at many of our schools here in Wycomico County. I also attended the North Salisbury Celebration for Destination. for Destination Imagination, the art parade at West Side Intermediate School. Mr. Joseph Coco, who is the music and strings person at West Side Intermediate, had invited me to attend their parade. I went to Pinehurst Field Day. And since I did attend Pinehurst Elementary School, I wore my Pinehurst Pride T-shirt. And I also read at Wonderful Willards. And I want to say something about Mrs. Yuwatz. Put together the video of all of us reading. And I've kept it on my computer. And I show it to anybody who will take time to look at it. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, the highlight of the month for me was the TAD program in North Salisbury. Thanks to Mr. Briggs's wife and TAD teacher, I was interviewed by six TAD students. And my daughter and wife went with me when I was interviewed. My daughter heard things that I hadn't spoken about since the war. They have provided a book. And it's, yes, that is me on the front. Yes, I did have hair. But they went through and did a great job. But one of the reasons I'm bringing this up tonight, when I showed up to North Salisbury, a friend of mine, who him and I started at DuPont together the same day, was there to be honored also. He left DuPont and became an educator. He retired from Sussex County as a vice principal. The next day after the ceremony, he buried his mother. And he came up to me at the service. He said, I want you to do me one thing. At your next board meeting, bring up what these teachers and students have done. Because we never had anything like this in Sussex County. And for any Vietnam veteran, we weren't honored when we came home. So, Woody Long, if you're looking tonight, this is for you and all the other veterans that were honored. There were 16 of us. And all of us got books. But I guess the greatest reward is after the ceremony, one of the young men that interviewed me has autism. And his mother and father and sister came up and talked to me. And the mother said, it seems like I've known you for 20 years. Because that's all he's talked about since he's met you. So, you know, with all the different students we have in this county, when you touch somebody, you never know. But again, on the record, to all the TAD teachers in this county, keep up the good work from us old veterans. We really do appreciate it. Thank you.
Don, show them the back picture.
Yeah. This is my, this is a basic training picture. It looks like a medic world. But it was, it was a good experience, and I really appreciate it. With that said, meeting adjourned.